Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231 PL 1975 has been made by regular mail and email. Such notice being submitted on January 5th, 2022, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street in Newton, New Jersey, to the following: The New Jersey Herald, The Star-Ledger, WSUS Radio, and WNNJ Radio, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for Public Announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, we'd like to remind you to please mute all electronic devices. I also wanted to make a special note that the next board meeting of the county commissioners has changed, the meeting date has changed due to scheduling conflicts. The board will meet May 23rd at 6:00 PM right here at the Performing Arts Center. That will be our next meeting, May 23rd. Item five on our agenda is the approval of our agenda, and I do need to make a few quick changes to our agenda. 13N, as in Mary, and 13O will be read into the record when we get to it. 13N, as in Nancy, will also be read into the record, but that resolution needs to change. That will read authorizing the County of Sussex to enter into an agreement with Jersey Professional Management for temporary interim county administrator services for the period commencing on or about May 24th through August 31st in the amount of $42,600. That also will be read into the record once we get to it on the agenda. Our agenda online, this item is blank, and the agenda that we handed out today has a different name on it. So it will now read Professional, uh, uh, Professional Man, Jersey Professional Management. With those, oh, I also need to table on our personnel agenda the position of Contract Administrator Two, pending further clarification and clarity. So with those quick revisions to our agenda, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved to approve the agenda as amended.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hardly, Commissioner Yardley seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Susie, can you please call the roll? I'm sorry. Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Okay. Item six on our agenda is our proclamation certificates and presentations. Item A, Recognizing Older Americans Month, that proclamation will be presented at the May 20th Senior Picnic. Items B and C, Eagle Scout recognition for Tyler and Eagle Scout recognition for Connor, will be presented at those respective Courts of Honor. And item D, Recognizing May 6th to 12th as Nurses Week, do we have Chelsea Choma from Public Health Nursing here to accept this proclamation? Hi, Chelsea. Chelsea, you can come on up, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Fantasia if she can please read this proclamation into the record.
Thank you. The proclamation reads, whereas in 1993, the American Nurses Association declared May 6th through 12th as the national week to recognize the nursing profession, and whereas nursing is the nation's largest healthcare profession with more than 3.8 million registered nurses nationwide, and whereas National Nurses Week is a time for individuals, employers, other healthcare professionals, and community leaders, among others, to recognize the critical and positive contributions of America's registered nurses, and whereas through their dedication, skill, and expertise, nurses deliver an extended array of healthcare services, including primary and preventive care, and utilize their skills in a variety of environments, and whereas nurses have experienced unprecedented challenges over the last two years due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas through the pandemic, nurses have demonstrated courage, perseverance, leadership, compassion, and quality care to individuals in need, and whereas the demand for qualified registered nurses is greater than ever to meet the increasingly complex needs of healthcare consumers in the community, and whereas the County of Sussex recognizes the indispensable contributions nurses make to the health and well-being of Sussex County residents, enabling the county to be a better, healthier place to live and work. Now, therefore be it resolved, along with the American Nurses Association, the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners hereby officially designates May 6th through 12th, 2022, as Nurses Week in Sussex County, and encourages all residents to celebrate the accomplishments of all of our registered nurses and their efforts to improve our healthcare system, not just during this week, but at every opportunity throughout the year, by order of the Board of County Commissioners, Anthony Fasano, Commissioner Director, Christopher Carney, Deputy Commissioner, and Commissioners Dawn Fantasia, Jill Space, and Herb Yardley.
Thank you, Commissioner Fantasia. Chelsea, that is our official proclamation that you've been given.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On behalf of the Office of Public Health Nursing, thank you for this proclamation and this recognition. In the Office of Public Health Nursing, we have nurses that have a variety of experience and a wide range of backgrounds. Together, they pool their knowledge and provide a base for a well-rounded, educated, and professional team. This team of nurses helps to provide services across all spectrums of life and deals with an array of public health concerns. Obviously, the past two years have been an unprecedented time for nurses. When the pandemic hit and everyone shut down or worked from home, these nurses didn't stop. They showed up for work every day and dealt with a workload that doubled, even tripled overnight. It was their responsibility to stay up to date on guidance that was changing daily, sometimes hourly, and be a resource to the very frightened public. When the vaccines were ready, the nurses jumped into action, and over the past two years, they have worked all hours of the day to provide vaccinations to the public. They set up clinics all around the community, working in spaces that were not intended for clinics and weather conditions that were less than desirable. It took the teamwork and effort of every person in the Office of Public Health Nursing to keep the daily flow going. What is important to remember, and something I want to stress and acknowledge, is that even though COVID has smothered the nursing world, their regular daily work never stopped. They were forced to integrate their daily workflow into this unknown and ever-changing pandemic world. Nurses within the department worked to continue to provide resources to our Special Child Health Program. There was an entire population of children that were seeking resources outside of their home prior to the pandemic to help enrich their education and help them grow. This wonderful nursing staff figured out creative ways to offer them intervention through Zoom, virtual group meetings, and other resources. In addition, they also continued to hold clinics for the uninsured children, requiring well-baby visits and vaccinations. They worked to screen men and women for cancer and to make sure their annual checkups and routine screenings weren't missed. These nurses also monitored and investigated child lead levels and provided education to parents. In addition, despite getting a waiver on school immunization audits, our nurses did them anyway and worked to audit every school as scheduled. If the nurses didn't do that, the community would have children with missed vaccines, leaving them vulnerable to other diseases that still exist. They couldn't forget that although they were fighting a major pandemic, they still needed to continue to protect against all other diseases that had come before this. Our priorities may have shifted, but the goal was always and is the same, to keep the public safe and healthy. I am proud to work with each and every one of these nurses, and at this time, I would like to ask all of them here tonight to stand up and be formally acknowledged and accept all the praise they deserve.
Thank you, Chelsea, and well said, and thank you to all of you here today and to all of our nurses here in Sussex County. And certainly, it's our hope, and I'm sure yours as well, that there's better days ahead. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Can I comment?
Absolutely.
We saw, you know, unprecedented levels of nursing shortages across the nation, and I myself am a school principal, and having a school nurse also has been an incredible challenge to be able to provide those services. But again, they did come through, and, and as Chelsea mentioned, we had our school nurses do all of the necessary audits and forms. I mean, their illnesses don't stop because of COVID. You know, we know 12-year-olds have to have the meningitis vaccine. I mean, there's just things that just don't stop, and to see these women and these men, they really were workhorses. I've never seen anything like it, and in the county, you said it very well when you said many were home, there was no option to stay at home. You had to be present. Our Office of Public Health Nursing worked with shortages, staff shortages, and they were just absolutely outstanding. Carol Novret could not sing your praises enough to the board over and over, and we are just so proud and lucky to have you. So thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Anthony.
Absolutely.
I want to personally just thank all of you for the work you did. I think, how many times is it that the person at the bottom that's doing the hard work, that's answering the phones, that's talking to the public, taking the abuse, people screaming at you, saying, when am I getting my shot? I know that's way behind us. You're holding up the shot, I'm going to die, I need the shot, you have to do this, when am I going to have it? And then, to do the clinics and the drive-throughs, to be involved in that, and go out and do the audits, and I've seen you at the fairgrounds and different events, and I really think you're the untold story of a lot of activity that happened for COVID and the hard work you did, and the mental anguish that, just the stress levels. I don't think people really can understand that, not having been in that situation. And I've never been in that situation, but I sure know that when that phone's ringing and people are calling, our nurses were there to answer it, and interacting with the state, which had to be extremely trying. So I just, I'd like to let you know that I appreciate it. I think all of the residents that hear the story and receive their vaccinations appreciate it, and nothing more I can say other than thank you very much.
Thank you, Herb. With that, is there a motion to adopt the proclamations this evening?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves, and Commissioner Yardley seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Thank you. Item seven on our agenda is public hearings, in which we have none. Item eight on our agenda is our first public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. When you arrive to the microphone, please maintain six feet social distance with other attendees, state your name, your municipality, and the agenda topic for the record. With that, is there a motion to open the floor for public comment for agenda items only? I'll make the motion. With that, is there a second to open the floor for public comment?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, and the floor is now open for our first public session from the floor regarding agenda items only. Is there anyone who wishes to speak regarding an agenda item? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the floor for public comment?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Space, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Item nine on our agenda is our Commissioner comments portion, and we'll start to my left as always with our new commissioner, Commissioner Space.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. This is my very first meeting, so if you don't know me, my name is Jill Space, and I'm from Wantage Township. I've lived in Sussex County the majority of my life. I grew up in Franklin before I moved to Wantage as a teenager, and I still live in Wantage. I've been married for 29 years. I have three grown children and a brand-new grandson that was born on Mother's Day. And I'm very happy to be here. I'm a businesswoman. I've worked at Space Farms, my husband's family business, for the last 27 years. I do all the financial aspects of it, and, you know, I'm very accessible. So if anyone needs to see me or wants to talk to me, you can find me there or email. I'm very good at responding to things, and I do understand that I'm here to work for all of you, not just one party, so, you know, that's that. And I have my orientation set up with the Administrator Greg Poff on May 24th, and that should be with our new interim administrator also. And considering that I've only been a commissioner for a week now, I've only been doing things, well, I've been doing things my whole life. You know, so, but I've only been a commissioner for a week, and I attended the Ginny's House Beef Steak, and then I went to the Chamber Breakfast yesterday with Commissioner Yardley, and they also spoke, Ginny's House spoke there too, about child abuse and what they do for the sexually abused children, and it was very informative, and they have a new dog, Huey. So when the children go there, they get put in a room, and the dog is in there, and they have the person that they're speaking to, and they only have to speak once before it goes to a court. The child doesn't have to go to the court. So it was very informative, and it's such a great organization, and we're lucky to have it. And the Chamber is also wonderful because there are so many things and opportunities for businesses to network, and they do a breakfast once a month if you're a Chamber member, and, you know, you can network with people. And I was really surprised yesterday, but I shouldn't be surprised. They asked how many businesses were still looking for help, and there were a lot of hands up in the room. So if you know of anyone that's looking for work, reach out to Tammy Horsefield, and she'll connect them pretty much with whatever type of job they're looking for, because there's just so many businesses that are struggling. So, and I'm also happy that at my first meeting, that we have the resolution, excuse me, to ask the legislature to pass legislation to protect parental rights. Our Assemblymen, Space and Worth, have introduced a parental rights bill which mirrors U.S. Senator Josh Hawley's parental rights bill in Washington, and our Senator Steve Ouroho is leading the fight with the Senate Republican Caucus and their Three-R Plan. Repeal the controversial sex ed standards, replace them, and restore parental rights. I think it's very important that we give it back to this, to the school boards and the parents to decide what goes on in the classroom and what these children are taught. So, thank you. Maybe you'll hear more from me next time.
Thank you, Commissioner Space, and welcome. Commissioner Fantasia.
Thank you. As far as updates from anything, I attended this, since our last meeting, I've attended nothing since our last meeting. Unfortunately, the day after our last meeting, after avoiding it for two years, I had contracted COVID. So I laugh, I got my letter from Public Health Nursing, so I'll date myself doing the Cy Sperling commercial, saying I'm not only a board member, I'm also a client. So I got the letter stating what to do with the procedures for COVID. So I'm back into the wild now, again today, and cleared, and it feels good to be back. So all of my updates are not from any meetings I attended, they're updates that I've gathered digitally from the different perspective departments that I deal with and speak with. My first update actually comes from Commissioner Carney, who is not here tonight. He did want me to share that construction on the Lackawanna cutoff should be starting tentatively June 1st. Project will bring jobs and much-needed transportation to our area. Also, Commissioner Carney extends his congratulations to Jill Space, looking forward to working with you, and that is the message from Commissioner Carney. So as far as my, excuse me, my updates from Senior Services, there is the Older Americans' Day Event. Senior Services is holding its annual Older Americans' Day Event on Friday, May 20th, 2022, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the 4-H Building at the Fairgrounds. Sussex County seniors can enjoy a demonstration by the Sheriff's K-9 Unit, attend workshops, and for more information and to register, please call the Sussex County Division of Social Services, 973-579-0555, extension 1277. Okay, for our COVID update, for vaccinations, again, the Sussex County Division of Health in collaboration with Sparta Pharmacy is offering COVID-19 vaccinations, Moderna, Johnson &amp; Johnson, and Pfizer, and Pfizer Pediatric. Available options include all of these shots, including boosters. They will be at St. Thomas the Apostle Church, 210 US 206 in Branchville, Friday, this Friday, May 13th, from 10:00 to 1:00, and the Health Division Office of Public Health Nursing in Hamburg on Wheatsworth Road, Tuesday, May 17th, from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and Wednesday, May 25th, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. If you would like to complete your consent form in advance, visit the Sussex County website, sussex nj.us. And if you know someone who is homebound, one of the big components of the vaccination process here in Sussex County was offering homebound vaccination, so that is still available if you so choose. The county prides herself on the choices offered to the public. Now, the COVID virus update, the most recent New Jersey Department of Health COVID-19 Activity Level report indicates the entire state is coded yellow, which indicates moderate activity, and that's pretty consistent across the nation. For the past week, we've been reporting an average of 50 cases per day, and there is an increasing number of cases. So 36,549 cases in Sussex County since the start of the pandemic. It's about 26% of our population, excuse me, and a total of 478 deaths, representing 1.3% of all cases. Now, again, everybody always asks for hospitalization information, so hospitalizations have significantly decreased. In May thus far, there are four hospitalizations, in April, 22, in March, there were 23, and in February, there were 49. So they were still just double-digit numbers, and now they are definitely decreasing. Now, as far as outbreaks in the county, again, to reiterate, not to beat a dead horse, but an outbreak means that it was spread at that location. Not four of you brought it from home and you happen to work at the same place. It has to be proven to be transmitted at that location to qualify as an outbreak. There's currently 25 noted in Sussex County. One at an acute care facility, eight long-term care facilities that continue to be plagued by COVID-19, two treatment rehab centers, seven schools, one daycare, and six workplaces. And variants, according to the most current Department of Health variant report, Department of Health is reporting 92.1% BA2 Omicron, 4.5% BA1 Omicron, 3% BA2.121 Omicron, now this is just getting silly, 0.5% B11529 Omicron. So good luck remembering all of that. BA2 seems to be the big one. They're all Omicron. I can say with great certainty that symptoms do change as they kind of, as the different variants have, have come out. Thank God I retained my taste and smell. I think I would jump off a cliff if I did not taste my coffee in the morning, so that was a good thing. For more information about booster shots, including eligibility requirements, vaccinations, and testing, again, visit sussex nj.us. Now, let's talk about health clinics other than COVID-related. A women's health clinic is held on Thursday, May 12th, that's tomorrow, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Office of Public Health Nursing, and a complete metabolic profile blood screening will be held Saturday, May 21st, 8:30 to 10:30 at the Office of Public Health Nursing. Now, that clinic provides basic screening blood work for Sussex County adults 18 and older. There is a fee of $50 payable by cash or check only, and appointments are required. So again, you can call the Office of Public Health Nursing. Everything starts and ends at our website, sussex nj.us. You can get links to all of these numbers and all of this information. I just want to note, without, you know, divulging too much information, to get back to the, get back to the issue of COVID-19 in our long-term care facilities. Doug, is there anything that you would specifically like to share this evening, or may I share a little bit of information about the response time back from the state?
Yeah, please. I mean, I, all I can add is that, you know, we have filed suit on the state's failure to respond to the multiple public records requests that the county has made for records. The county actually had a public question on its ballot last year, in which the county overwhelmingly supported the commissioners in pursuing that inquiry. We filed suit, and ironically, within days after us doing so, we received multiple requests for extensions, but candidly, they were a lot of time. So we have a return, I think our first return date on our first claim is June 6th, if my memory serves me correctly. We've got, we have our briefs heading in tomorrow, but we continue to pursue those requests.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And last, I would just like to comment again. Commissioner Director Fasano is going to read into the record the resolution authorizing the creation of Parents' Bill of Rights concerning the protection and education of Sussex County children. If you've been following this, four members of the 13 members of the New Jersey State Board of Education, including Andrew Mulvahill, who is the Vice President of the Board from Vernon, did write and request that the Acting Commissioner of Education review these standards prior to actual implementation, which was to be implemented in 2022, in the fall of 2022, in the 23-school year. That was rejected, and again, it is causing quite an uproar, and I do fully support the resolution that is on the agenda. We are seeing an unsettling trend of parent decisions and family roles kind of being put aside by, in essence, what I look at as a nanny state, where the government states that we know better and we know best, and slowly parental rights are becoming less and less on the forefront. It's very disturbing because New Jersey does have the best public schools in, in the country, and we need to continue the trend of providing correct information, standards-based education to children without infringing on parental rights for sensitive issues. So I fully support this resolution. I also sit as a member on a committee with a, with a group called Jersey First that is also exploring a parental bill of rights. Monmouth County did kick off this initiative as well. So this is statewide. I do notice that this is also crossing party lines as well, where there seems to be some support also coming from more moderate factions from both, both, both the right and the left. So again, it warrants, warrants further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fantasia. Commissioner Yardley.
Thank you. Public health nursing is, once again, a topic. The Office of Public Health Nursing has been nominated for the COVID-19 Leadership Award. That's a special award for 2022 from the Chamber of Commerce for Exceptional Leadership in COVID-19 Public Health Emergency Response. At the Toast to the Stars Award Ceremony is on Thursday, May 12th, at the Lafayette House at 12:00 PM, and the nurses' responses has included, this award includes things such as the vaccination sites, education outreach program on COVID-19, guidance, case investigation, contact tracing, outbreak investigation, and infection prevention control, among everything else that you guys do. So congratulations on that. There's a Senior Services Caregiver Support Group, Hope Akon Community Resource and Wellness Center. The support group meeting will be held in person at Hope Akon Community Resource and Wellness Center in Hope Akon from 5:30 to 6:30 PM on Tuesday, May 17th. For more information or to register to attend the meetings, please call the Senior Services at 973-579-055, extension 1288. I also attended Crime Stoppers, and Crime Stoppers has a dinner tomorrow night. All proceeds for that, and that will be at the Farmstead, and all proceeds for that goes to Crime Stoppers tip line, and that's where if you see a crime or a criminal activity happening, you can anonymously report it, you get a number. You don't have to say, your identity is not revealed, and if there's a conviction, you get a reward, or if there's a warrant out for somebody, you get, you get some form of reward. And that's a, something I attend every month. I did attend the New Jersey Association of Counties Conference. That was a great activity. Got to speak to other counties, look at what they're doing, understand, have different meetings, educational programs, and it's really a very good event, so very enjoyable. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Yardley, and thank you to all who are joining us this evening. I'll keep my report brief this night, and first, I wanted to I'll keep my report brief this night, and first, I wanted to officially welcome Commissioner Space to the Sussex County Commissioner Board. After she was selected and sworn in to fill the unexpired term of Commissioner Patillo, I had the opportunity to speak with her and welcome her with true excitement and a commitment to work with her so that she can be as successful as I know she can be here on this board. I've had the privilege of knowing Commissioner Space and her family for many years. She is an extremely bright and collaborative person. I know she cares deeply about Sussex County, and I really couldn't think of a better position, better person to have in the position, so chill. Congratulations again. Welcome. I'm really excited to work with you. We also have another addition tonight I wanted to address. Administrator Poff will be leaving Sussex County in a few weeks for a new endeavor that we wish him well on, and it's not quite time to say goodbye just yet. However, the Board will be retaining the services of an interim county administrator to fill the position once Administrator Poff leaves, and the Board will seek to find a new full-time county administrator, which will certainly take some time, as the Board will do its due diligence on finding the best possible candidate for the position. Tonight, the Board is pleased to appoint John Lovell to serve in the capacity of interim county administrator. John is a very experienced government administrator with a strong background and over 40 years of experience. I had the opportunity to speak with John last week, and I'm very confident that he will serve as an excellent interim county administrator for Sussex County and its current needs during this transitional period. Last week, I also had the opportunity to meet with Tammy Horstfield, the President of the Sussex County Chamber of Commerce, and I thought that that was a really great meeting, as we began to put together the framework for Sussex County to have its own small business assistance program to help our business community recover from the last two years. We will have further information on this program coming very shortly. I believe this program will directly bolster and help our business community across the Board and across the county. The funds used toward this program will come from a portion of the county's allotment from the American Rescue Plan. Investing in our business community is one of the closest things we have, really, to a guaranteed return on investment, and it comes at a crucial time of recovery for small businesses across the county and across the country, for that matter. It's a priority. I'm thrilled to see it coming along, and we can't wait to get this information in front of the small businesses we know and we love in our local communities. Finally, I wanted to end my comments on a high note, and I wanted to shout out one of our many Sussex County employees who go above and beyond every day, and this employee would be Skylands Ride Omnibus Operator Doug Mall, who was selected by New Jersey Transit to represent the state of New Jersey in the National Rodeo, that's R-O-A-D-E-O, like a road, which will be held this year in Louisville, Kentucky. This will be Doug's fifth time competing at the national level. The event is sponsored by the Community Transportation Association of America, and it invites drivers from around the country, including Alaska and Hawaii, to this best of the best driving competition to compete for top scores on a course that tests driving, customer service, and bus safety skills on every level of the driver's ability. Drivers are scored on their ability to maneuver their vehicles in an obstacle course designed to represent everyday driving patterns, and are also scored on a written test, wheelchair securement, and bus preparation. It's quite an accomplishment. So I just wanted to congratulate Doug, wish him the very best of luck next week, and let him know that we'll be watching and we'll be rooting for him, and when he comes back, we can't wait to take a bus ride. Really looking forward to that. So with that, I will close my comments, and we'll move on to Item 10 on our agenda, which is the approval of our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A through C?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Item 11 on our agenda is the approval of our minutes for both our regular session and our executive session meeting of April 6th, and all here are eligible to vote on this except for Commissioner Space, of course, who is not yet a commissioner during this meeting. So with that, is there a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes and executive session meeting minutes from April 6th?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yardley seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Abstain.
Item carries. Item 12 on our agenda, we have our appointments and and or resignations. In this case, we have three items of appointments in which Commissioner Space is filling in the positions that were vacated by Commissioner Patillo. Do we have a motion to adopt the Resolutions A through C?
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Yardley moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion?
Congratulations. Thank you.
Susie, can you please call the roll for 12A through C?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
And Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, item 13, our resolutions portion of our agenda, the last three we'll hold off on for now, so I'll ask for a resolution for 13A through L.
I'll make it.
Commissioner Yardley makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion on 13A through L? Seeing none, Susie, can you please call the roll for 13A through L?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Motion carries. 13M, I will read on the floor. It was listed in title only. It's a resolution accepting the donation of the real property and improvements located at 101 Main Street, Newton, New Jersey, Block 1403, lots 19 and 1, and the monetary donation of approximately $350,000 from the Newton Library Association, and authorizing the execution and a donation agreement with the association. It reads, whereas the Newton Library Association is the owner of the real property located at 101 Main Street, Newton, New Jersey, also known as Block 1403, lots 19 and 1, on the official tracts map of the town of Newton, which is property, which property is improved with the Dennis Library building and related fixtures, fittings, and improvements. Whereas the county currently operates the Dennis Library as part of the Sussex County library system, and whereas the association has offered to donate the property, together with furniture, furnishings, supplies, and other tangible personal property contained in the Dennis Library, to continue along with approximately $350,000 or such lesser amount as to be determined by the association board, to be utilized in the county's sole discretion for the care, maintenance, and improvement of the Dennis Library. And whereas the county is authorized and empowered to accept the donation of the property, together with any furniture, furnishing, supplies, and other tangible personal property contained in the Dennis Library pursuant to NJSA 40A 12-5. And whereas the county is further authorized and empowered to accept the donation of the monetary amount set forth above pursuant to NJSA 40A 5-29. And whereas the county and the association have negotiated a donation agreement to memorialize the terms and conditions of the donation, and whereas the association shall convey the property to the county by bargain and sale deed in accordance with the donation agreement. And whereas the commissioners wish to thank the association for their generous donation and years of dedicated service to the Dennis Library and the patrons that it serves. Now therefore be it resolved by the county commissioners of the County of Sussex that it hereby accepts the donation from the Newton Library Association of Real Property located at 101 Main Street, Newton, New Jersey, also known as Block 1403, lots 19 and 1, on the official tracts map of the town of Newton, which property is improved with the Dennis Library building and related fixtures, fittings, and improvements, together with any furniture, furnishing, supplies, and other tangible personal property contained in the Dennis Library, along with approximately $350,000 in the county's sole discretion for the care, maintenance, and improvement of the Dennis Library. Be it further resolved that the county commissioner-director and clerk of the Board and their respective designees be and hereby are authorized to execute on behalf of the county the donation agreement which is annexed here to and made a part here of. Be it further resolved that the county commissioner-director or his or her designee be and hereby is authorized to execute on behalf of the county any necessary title documents for the transfer of ownership of the property, and be it further resolved that all county officials and employees are hereby authorized and directed to take all action necessary and appropriate to effectuate the terms of this resolution. Certified as a true copy by the resolution of the Board on this day, on this 11th day of May 2022. I know that it was a lot. We had to read that into the record, and what that signifies and what that really formalizes is the donation of the Dennis Library to the County of Sussex, so that the County of Sussex can do what it set out to do last year, and that's to reconstruct and improve that facility so that it serves as really our premier library right down the street here in Newton. We're really excited about that. We did have some presentations on that last year. I know we had Will Porter here as well, but the details of that project are available online. So with that, I'll ask for a resolution, I'm sorry, I'll ask for a motion to accept Resolution 13M, the donation of the Dennis Library.
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Yardley moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Susie, can you please call the roll for 13M?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
13N, I also do need to read into the record. I do need to add that this is pending final approval from council, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The contract, not the resolution.
The contract pens final approval from council. Okay, this resolution reads, and it's a bit shorter, authorizing the County of Sussex to enter into an agreement with Jersey Professional Management for temporary interim county administrator services for the period commencing on or about May 24, 2022, through August 31, 2022, and the estimated amount of $42,600. Whereas the County of Sussex desires to enter into an agreement with Jersey Professional Management for the provision of temporary interim county administrator services for the period commencing on or about May 24, 2022, through August 31, 2022. And whereas Jersey Professional Management's proposal dated April 25, 2022, provides for an estimated amount of $42,600 for said temporary interim county administrator services. And whereas associates of Jersey Professional Management possess appropriate licenses, certificates, and or experience, and whereas the county treasurer has certified that there are adequate funds in the budget for the awarding of said agreement. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners that it does hereby authorize the county commissioners to direct, the county commissioner-director, clerk of the Board, and their respective authorized designees to execute an agreement in a form acceptable to county council with Jersey Professional Management in the estimated amount of $42,600 for the purposes of providing temporary interim county administrator services. And be it further resolved that the the agreement will be in effect commencing on or about May 24, 2022, through August 31, 2022, and be it further resolved that Mr. John Lovell shall serve in the day-to-day capacity of interim county administrator, and be it further resolved that one signed copy of this resolution be forwarded to Jersey Professional Management located at 2423 Northeast Avenue, Cranford, New Jersey, 07016, certified as a true copy resolution on the 11th day of May 2022. This serves as the agreement to appoint John Lovell as the interim county administrator. Do I have a motion for Resolution 13N?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion?
Yes. I do want to stress that John Lovell is no stranger to the County of Sussex. During the pandemic, we did have need for assistance in the absence of our health officer who exited mid-pandemic, and John actually did step up. He had an excellent rapport with our county employees. We got very good feedback, very conscientious, very professional, and I'm sure he will do quite a commendable job filling the void here as we are seeking out our permanent new administrator.
Thank you, John. Any other comments? Hearing none. Susie, can you please call the roll for 13N?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Item passes, and we congratulate Mr. Lovell. Looking forward to working with him. 13O on our agenda is our final one to read. It's a resolution authorizing the creation of a Parent Bill of Rights concerning the protection and education of Sussex County children. Whereas legislation was enacted by the New Jersey Legislature and signed into law by Governor Phil Murphy, the effect of which is to teach sexually specific and highly sensitive curricula to New Jersey children generally and Sussex County children particularly, as early as grades K to 2. And whereas recent guidelines provided by the New Jersey Department of Education and the associated sample curricula regarding SAM is disturbing and concerning to parents and citizens of Sussex County and throughout New Jersey. And whereas every member of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners was contacted by Sussex County residents expressing their thoughts and concerns regarding the legislation, guidelines, and curricula. And whereas departments' guidelines were promulgated and the legislation passed and signed into law in 2020 and 2021 during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, when New Jersey residents were sheltering in place, preoccupied with the pandemic, and there was not sufficient time or opportunity for public comment. And whereas, as a result of the foregoing, Sussex County parents specifically and New Jersey parents generally did not have any input into creating the sexually specific and highly sensitive curricula that will be taught to Sussex County children under the legislation and guidelines. And whereas it is the overwhelming opinion of this commission that the decision to teach sexually specific and highly sensitive curricula to children, children ages K to 2, is best left to the sound discretion of those children's parents, local communities, and local districts. And whereas it is the overwhelming opinion of this commission that Governor Phil Murphy and the New Jersey State Legislature have no business regulating, legislating, directing, or dictating matters that are and should be decided solely and exclusively by parents in said parents' best judgment as to the health, safety, and welfare of their children. And whereas the commissioners call on Governor Murphy, the New Jersey Legislature, and the Department of Education to return such decisions to local school boards regarding such sexually specific and highly sensitive curricula for our children. And whereas, as a show of support for Sussex County families, the commissioners also desire to work with Sussex County parents, community leaders, and professionals to develop the framework for Parents' Bill of Rights to use as a model for Sussex County schools, as well as our local school districts, that will, among other things, protect our children, notify our parents of the curricula being taught in our schools, and allow parents to make their own informed decisions regarding their children's education and exposure to sensitive information. And whereas, public interest demands that parents have an opportunity to be heard on the issue of this curricula being taught in grades K to 2. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, find and resolve as follows. We demand that Governor Phil Murphy, the New Jersey State Legislature, and the Department of Education ban the sexually specific and highly sensitive curricula for young children that was developed out of the aforementioned guidelines, legislation, and sample curricula. And two, the county commissioner-director, the county administrator, and county council are each authorized and directed to work with our parents, community leaders, educators, and professionals to develop the framework for a Parents' Bill of Rights to use as a model for our county and local schools that will serve, among other things, as a guide to protect our children, to notify parents of the curricula being taught to their children in our schools, and allow parents to make their own informed decisions regarding their children's education and exposure to sensitive information. And three, finally, the clerk of the Board of the County of Commissioners is hereby authorized and directed to forward this resolution to Governor Murphy, the New Jersey Legislature, the Department of Education, the County Superintendent of Schools, the local school boards and private and charter schools, New Jersey League of Municipalities, all county boards of county commissioners, the mayor and council of all municipalities within Sussex County, and the New Jersey State Board of Education, certified as a true copy resolution adopted on this 11th day of May 2022. With that, do we have a motion to accept Resolution 13O?
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion?
Yes. I just want to again reiterate some factual information for the public. To be clear, the state, New Jersey state, in no way mandates a specific curriculum. What they mandate is student learning standards. And for this particular set of of standards, it is done in grade bands. So in other words, by the end of grade 2, these are the standards that must be taught. By the end of grade 5, these are the next set of standards to be taught. By the end of grade 8, these are the next standards to be to be taught, and so on and so forth. Local school boards do retain the ability and the discretion as to the actual curricula that is written to teach this, as well as the materials used. Now this is where it gets a little dicey, because the state of New Jersey did something and then backtracked, and this caused a problem. The state of New Jersey claimed to not endorse or not support specific resources that were released. It was a Dropbox file, I believe, that a couple of the school districts did recommend and implement, but it was published on the New Jersey Department of Education website. So these resources were indeed shared by the New Jersey Department of Education. So I think it's very duplicitous, shady, to claim that New Jersey did not endorse use of such, when again, they do not mandate what you must use to teach the standards. They mandate the actual standards themselves, but you cannot put up controversial resources and then claim to have no knowledge of such resources. I find that ridiculous. If any local school board put something up and then said, oh, but we didn't mean we were going to teach your kids that, come on, give me a break. So I think the best move was sending it back to the state board of ed. I thank those four members who did say it requires a closer look. I am not placing a value judgment on the actual standards themselves. That's for parents to decide. That's for school boards in conjunction with parents to decide. What I am placing a value judgment on is the ridiculous way that things continue to be rammed down the throats, and any parent that pushes back is looked at as archaic, as fringe, as closed-minded, as bigoted. They are your children, and it is your right to have a say and a seat at the table. So shame on the state of New Jersey for publishing these resources and then claiming no ownership of them. But again, no school board is mandated to use any controversial resource that they are not comfortable with. The only mandate is the actual standards. That's all.
Thank you, John. Any other comments? Hearing none. Susie, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space? Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Item passes. Item 14 on our agenda is the awards of contract change orders or bids. The Board of County Commissioners of the county of Sussex has reviewed the awards of contract change orders and bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. Is there a motion to adopt Resolutions 14A through C?
I'll make it.
Commissioner Yardley moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? Susie, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Item 15 on our agenda is the payment of the bills. Is there a motion to pay the bills list?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Susie, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Item 16 on our agenda is authorizing the personnel agenda May 11th, as amended, at the beginning of our meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the personnel agenda?
I'll make a motion to authorize personnel agenda as amended.
Okay. Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? Susie, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Item passes. Item 17 on our agenda is our administrative report. I'll call up Administrator Poff.
Thank you, Director. I'd like to extend my congratulations to our Office of Public Health Nursing and all the nurses within the county on the board's recognition of this week as Nurses Week. I had the privilege to work with a number of our nursing staff at the testing and vaccinating sites and can speak firsthand to their dedication and skill to serving the residents of this county, and I thank you all very much. The county administrator executive search, while the board has authorized the appointment of an interim administrator for approximately 90 days, the county administrator executive search, the county is seeking a well-qualified firm to assist in the recruitment of its next county administrator. That request for proposals was listed on the county's website today, so for those that may be interested in obtaining one of those proposals, they can visit the Sussex County webpage at sussex nj.us to request a proposal. I am extremely pleased that the board this evening has accepted the donation of the Dennis Library and the associated property from the Newton Library Association. This will allow for the development of architectural and engineering plans for the library expansion. You can expect to see a resolution on authorizing architectural services at your next meeting, and this is the next step in the project of a $7 million library expansion that is being funded by the state of New Jersey through its Library Construction Bond Act grant that the county received, along with the county's match coming from the proceeds from the sale of the homestead. So this is really a tremendous project, and I'm very glad to see that through, at least to the part now where plans will be developed for that library expansion. And lastly, I would like to congratulate Commissioner Space on coming aboard, and very much looking forward to participating in the orientation that's scheduled for the end of the month.
Thank you.
And I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Administrator Poff. Item 18 on our agenda is county council report. Council, do you have anything for us this evening?
Very briefly, just since our last meeting, my focus has really largely been on the departure of the county administrator and the process for identification and selection of an interim and longer-term replacement, negotiation of several contracts, some ongoing and potential litigation, and lastly, assistance in, you know, some legal applications within the county engineer's office.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item 19 on our agenda is unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business this evening? Hearing none. Item 20 is new business. Do we have any new business this evening?
I don't know if it falls under the category of new business, but again, in my comments, I did not welcome Commissioner Space. I'd just like to say that the board prides itself on having diversity of experience. You know, we come from different walks, from the health department. We come from education. We come from engineering roads. We come from the arts. And to actually have, again, a board member now with so much business acumen, business experience right here in Sussex County, you are such a welcome addition to the board, so I appreciate you, and I so look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Any other new business? Okay, item 21 on our agenda is our second and final public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less regarding non-agenda topics. Please line up to the microphone, and when you arrive, please maintain a six-feet social distance with other attendees, and when you arrive, please state your name and municipality for the record. Is there a motion to open the floor tonight for public comment?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries, and the floor is now open for public comment. Is there anyone wishing to make a public comment this evening? You're welcome to come on up to the microphone over here. Hearing none. Is there a motion to close the floor for public comment and to return to regular business this evening? Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Item 22 on our agenda is our reminders, and as always, we remind you to check the county's website, which is www.sussex nj.us, for the latest COVID updates, for the latest business updates, for the latest Sussex County updates. That's the place to go. It changes every day. Item 23 on our agenda is our executive session item. We'll ask Susie to please read that for us.
Whereas the subject matter about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to NJSA 10-4-12B, and whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss each matter in executive session. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Sussex, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10-4-12B and NJSA 4-4-13, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session from which the public shall be excluded. And be it further resolved that the general nature of the subject to be discussed relate to the following item authorized by NJSA 10-4-12B as designated below. Item 7, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege. PBS 138, Sheriff's Unit.
I'm going to add matters of general contract, Mr. Chabot, please.
Okay. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality. And be it further resolved that upon completion of the business for which the Board has entered into the executive session, the Board
Shall not.
Shall not reconvene and resume its meeting open to the public. And be it further resolved that the Board expects
Not.
Not to take formal action after returning from executive session, except to adjourn the regular meeting.
Thank you, Susie. Is there a motion to adopt the executive session resolution and enter into executive session?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Commissioner Yardley seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful evening and get home safe. Thank you so much.